Quarter meeting of the Carver Board of Selectmen July 12, 2016. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And now our community prayer read by Selectman Maroni.
Almighty God humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And please keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. But please let's take a special prayer this evening for all of the Dallas victims and all of the police victims within our country right now serving us and protecting us. Pray for all of our service responders and for this country and for those in this country that feel like they are victimized that they find peace in their hearts as well. In Jesus's name, amen.
This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15. We have openings on several committees. Please refer to the Board of Selectmen page on our website for a listing and application. Donations to the food pantry can be made at the Council on Aging or the public library. Now we move to citizen participation. It's 10 minutes that we hold in reserve for citizens that would like to address an issue with the Board of Selectmen. We ask that you speak to the issue in three minutes or less in order to allow other people to speak. And was there anybody that wanted to speak to the board tonight? Yes ma'am. If you could approach the microphone and give us your name and address.
Okay. Yeah, okay. You in?
I'm here.
Okay. Give us just one second here.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay.
I didn't move too far.
My name is Nancy.
Pull the microphone up close, please.
My name is Nancy Ryan. I live at 180 Tremont Street. And I'm here tonight on behalf of all the people that come to the COA. We right now have no air conditioning. And the air conditioning went down last October, which the director was aware of. And we were told that it was brought before the director, the town administrator, excuse me. Nothing has been done about it. Come June, the building was taken over by the DPW. And so the DPW was called and they were told that they didn't know, they told the site manager that they didn't know what they could do because there were no funds for it. We've been told that they're waiting on a second bid. And it's so deplorable down there. We've got seniors who cannot come in to have a meal. We have seniors who cannot come in because of the breathing problems. And it's just not right. You know, we've got the new school, we've got the new, we've got the new school, we're getting the new fire station. And where, where is it written that there's going to be something eventually for our seniors? And I don't know, we're bringing this out into the public because we just want everybody to realize that it's really, it is so bad down there. A group of us, all of us here tonight, we're all heavily involved with the COA. A group of us came down last Thursday and we ended up having to leave. We've got industrial fans which just blow warm air around. Few of us were sitting trying to have lunch and were wiping the sweat off our forehead. We all ended up having to leave. There's a senior down there, Jim, and he has painting classes on Thursday. And he had to take one of the fans and carry it himself down or roll it down the stairs because there's two rooms down there. One of the rooms is used as his room. And now he has people who can't come to the painting classes. They can't come, they can't do crafts. There's a group of us that used to play dominoes. We can't come there. So we're just here wanting to know what's going to be done about this situation.
I don't want to get caught up in protocols, but have you gone to the COA Board of Directors? I mean, and again, I don't want to get caught up in protocols and getting a comfortable climate in the Council on Aging should be paramount to getting something done. But normally, the way it's worked down there is that the Board of Directors would work with the director to put in the request.
I think what we all would like to know, excuse me, I think we all would like to know, if that second bid comes in, are there funds to take care of the central air conditioning? Are the funds there?
Is it central air? I always thought there were window units.
No, central.
Central air?
No, central air.
Mr. Milonowski, do you have any sort of an update on this?
Absolutely. There's a lot of facts that just, I think, since the topic's been brought up, would probably be educational to folks that I'm sure the Council on Aging would have been able to do this as well, or the director. In essence, what we have is the existing cooling system on the building was a rooftop unit that had multiple ductworks running throughout the building. The contractor that went in and with town staffed, it was determined that it was not repairable even with buying new units in there. So as a result of that, we have changed the process. So we're now going to be running in mini split systems into the building, abandoning the old system, which also means abandoning the old smoke alarm system and having to put in new smoke alarms for the process. Those will be, we have one bid for that. We're waiting for two more bids. We hope to be in a position of awarding those bids later this week. But again, we're just waiting for a more competitive process for that. And obviously, we wouldn't be awarding the bids if we didn't have the funding in place.
Can I, can I ask, relatively short money, I go back far enough with the Council on Aging that I remember when there were just window units that used to cool the place. I would think we could procure a couple of window units. We can pursue this after the meeting, but I would think we could procure a couple of window units just for at least temporary relief for the main dining hall while we're getting the rest of this taken care of. So let's have that conversation after the meeting.
We're looking just for, so you know, order magnitude, we're probably looking around 15 to 20 grand to do the mini split system. And orders of magnitude more than that for the other system, which again, it's an obsolete system. But picking up a few window units, we'll take a look at, see if we need some of those installed.
Just to get, so the dining room can be, area can at least can be used.
Well, I think the thought that we had was, this was brought up last October. We're into July now, between October and July. Nothing was ever discussed about this situation?
Again, I don't have any background in this and this really.
No, well, I'm just saying, we all know we're on.
Well, we will certainly ask some questions now that you brought this to our attention and pursue it with the Board of Directors down there.
How long is this going to take? I mean, people.
Well, we'll try to, you talking about the window units? Are you talking about the overall?
We're just talking to get something that will be suitable and cool enough for people to come. We have no advocate, you know? I'm coming to speak for the people who cannot come to the COA.
I would think we can address the cooling in the main dining room very quickly. And then, any idea, once we award the bid, how long of that process is going to be?
Again, we hope to award the bid later this week, probably execute a contract next week and then it's scheduling with the contractor, whoever wins the bid. And certainly, the Council on Aging Board of Directors is the advocate for the building, for the people. And that's who is responsible for making sure and helping us to prioritize what the priorities are.
Could we speak with John Woods about getting a few air units in the windows?
Sure, I'm going to work on that.
They could do that by tomorrow.
That's what we're going to do, yeah.
But I still go back to the fact that we could go before the council. But what difference would it make because?
Well, and again, I don't want to get caught up in protocols, but there's, there's.
But people have known about this since last October.
I, you know, I can't speak to that issue. I have no idea.
Well, we're speaking to it because we're all down there.
But I can't answer your questions as to why there was a delay.
That's what I'm saying, that's what we're looking for. We're looking for, why wasn't this addressed last fall and taken care of when they were aware that the unit was non-repairable?
I hear what you're saying and all we can do is look into it at this point because we don't have the answers here.
Right, I mean, the group that sits here tonight, we're all involved, we play dominoes, we do the crafts, they do the bingo, none of these things we're able to do right now.
And that, and that's why they're going, we've already stated, going to be working to getting some window units in there, we'll be doing it offline to get those in there ASAP. It doesn't do a lot of good right now to go back to start looking to get blame. It does a lot more good to go ahead and get this fixed so we can cool out that building so everybody can go in back using it again.
Was anybody aware on the board?
No, the chairman said.
That's right, nobody on the board was aware of this situation, which I think is sad.
Well, and again, we're certainly going to ask some questions, but again, I, you know, did any of you meet with the Board of Directors on this issue? Sit down and?
The director of the Council on Aging?
Right, but the director is directed by the Board of Directors. But again, I don't want to, let's not get into protocols, I think, as Alan said, the idea is to, let's correct what we have now, we can take our time and figure out how we got to this point.
You know, we have approximately 2,500 seniors in the town. When does it become time for the seniors to be acknowledged? When does this happen? It seems things are done for everybody else and nothing gets done for the seniors.
Well, I, I can.
I've talked to everybody on the board at one time or another, you all.
We missed, we had, we had an opportunity back in the 90s when we, funds were available that we didn't pursue at the time. And there's a variety of reasons behind that. I know that the, we're doing our master plan right now and a senior center is front and center as part of that master plan. And I have asked the town administrator to put a senior center on our long-term capital planning budget, so.
The last thing we want right now is a new senior center, the last thing we need. We want to know what's going to be happening right now for most of us 10 years down the road, five years down the road. It's not going to matter. We want to be able to continue going to the Council on Aging.
And we will certainly work with the Board of Directors on trying to do everything we can to make that as comfortable a location to work out of as possible.
What would make you feel comfortable, Nancy? Do you, you want answers, correct?
I want answers. I think it's, this has gone on too long. And we're, Mary Ann is sitting here, we have been the two that will come forward and speak, the rest of the group sitting in the audience.
But have you actually set up a meeting with the Board of Directors? Have you at any time over the last six months?
Excuse me, everybody's talking like we have never spoken to the director about any of this. Not true.
The director, the Board of Directors.
I'm saying, I sat in every meeting with the, with the Board of Directors for about a whole year. And it's, you can sit there and talk to them if you wish, that's fine. If you wish to talk to them, that's good too. But when you have the director sitting right in the same room with everybody else, when it's hot and everybody's pouring sweat and does not mention any of these discussions, that's when Nancy decided to come down. I have an uncle who's 88 years old and end-stage heart disease, loves going to the COA. He's not been able to go but I think half a dozen times this whole summer because he can't sit there. And there's no reason behind it.
We are going to address that immediately.
And she was speaking to you about us not wanting a new building. We don't need a new building. What we need is what we've needed for the past four or five years, which is a full-time director and a full-time schedule of open hours like every other town in the South Shore and the state has. That's what we need. And we need it now. And I'm sick and she's sick of going to everybody individually and asking questions. And everybody listens and nods their head and bobs and weaves and does nothing. And every year I listen to when Mr. Milonowski and the board sits together to find their goals for the next year, never have I heard the words "senior center" and "a full-time director" come out of their mouth. And it's about time. And I think that it's way past time. We have, we have one of the most sorry setups for the seniors that we have anywhere around here. And there's no excuse for it. One person, that's all we need, one person.
Okay.
Thank you.
I hear you, thank you.
And I would like to make a request, if I can, to be put on the agenda for the next meeting. I don't know if we put that right now.
For what, for what purpose?
In August.
We have several, we have several issues we'd like to go over and we'd like to bring you some information and all that. But we're not, we would just like to be on the agenda so we can get a dialogue going with somebody that can make a difference.
Again, there's, we don't want to get into personnel issues as part of an agenda.
Of course not.
All right, so that, you know, we'd be, but I think we can talk about having you on the agenda, but you're going to have to let us know exactly what it is that you want to have.
Well, fine, that's fine, absolutely. And then you can invite the whole board if you wish. That would be even better because we've certainly spoken to them before.
Mr. Chair, Mary Ann, will you just state your name for the record?
I'm sorry, my name is Mary Ann Prescott and I live at 10A Meadow Brook Way in Carver.
Mr. Chairman, just to help move that meeting along at the next meeting so we can make sure that their issues are properly addressed, it would be beneficial, since the town has elected to have a Council on Aging Board of Directors, that they first meet with the Board of Directors, not the director, the Board of Directors, and establish what their priorities are. Because the Selectmen, you know, have a responsibility to listen to the entity that's in charge of representing the seniors. And if, and that needs to be the first step. But if they're not happy with the results of the Board of Directors, then that's when it should be brought to the Selectmen to do that. But I'm not sure the Board of Directors of the Council on Aging are aware of the issues that they're going to bring forward. And we want to make sure they're on the same page, one way or the others, because they help to prioritize.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I think Mary Ann just stated that they have talked with the Board of Directors.
Yes, we have.
And I think the suggestion that they come to the meeting.
What? I think it would be a wonderful idea.
If we're all on the same page, it would be nice to have.
Because they're an advisory.
Have a conversation with the board and then make it a.
Because they're an advisory board. For the director is, has always told everyone in there, "Come to me first for everything." That's what we did. That's what was done. Didn't say go to the board, said, "Come to me." We did. And she's right here, she could speak to that because that's what she tells everyone. So you're asking us now to do something that we haven't been told to do before. That's all we're saying, okay? So we would like to speak to the board, that's fine. And the director and anybody else that wants to come, because we want this out in the open this time. Talk to everyone at the same time.
I just, I think it would be good if everyone were in the same meeting. That way, there's no misunderstandings, everyone's on the same.
I can appreciate that.
Yes, Sarah, thank you. It's exactly what we want.
I think everyone needs to keep up to speed on what the concerns are.
I think it's time.
Thank you, Sarah, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, now we move.
So you're stuck with me for a while. I seem to be stuck.
Come on, old lady.
Get you unstuck. I get no respect.
Not fair.
Okay, I'm good.
The next item on our agenda is we are going to hear from Connor Skinner, an Eagle Scout project approval.
Connor, if you want to give us your name and address and sort of bring us up to speed. I'm Connor Skinner from 28 Deer Hill Lane, a member of the Carver 248. And I'm looking for approval for my Eagle project at Shirtlift Park. And this is just some visuals to give you an idea of what we'll be working on. So most of the work will be done on the main bandstand, whether that's replacing the railing, most of the wood, the skirt boards at the bottom of the steps. As you can see, a lot of it, the paint is faded or pieces of the railing are missing. Here, there's some nails just sticking out. We'd also work on painting the.
Excuse me, guys, could you like, can't hear over Connor, sorry, thank you.
We'd also work on replacing some of the boards on these in-ground benches here. Originally, replacing picnic tables was also part of the plan. I noticed there's brand-new picnic tables down there, so that'll no longer be necessary. But I think, do you have a closer picture? Yes. Some of the boards, you can tell, have been replaced individually. The rest are faded. I think it would be an overall improvement if we could replace some as a whole and repaint them. We'd also do some landscaping in front of it. There's a garden there. It's kind of in bad shape, could use some work. And I believe that would also contribute to the overall image of Shirtlift Park. As to how we'd be getting this done, we'd pick some weekends in the fall, most likely, early fall, after the Boy Scout troop gets back together. And that would probably be a minimum of four days, four full days of work. Tools and transport and safety equipment would be provided by either me or other members of the troop who'd be willing to donate their time and equipment. And I foresee this being a problem, it never has been for past Eagle projects. And the process of completing the project aside, I do believe that this is something that will greatly benefit the community. You'd be hard-pressed to find someone who hasn't found their way into Shirtlift Park at some time or other. And it's home to many events throughout the year, such as Music in the Park, which is coming up this weekend actually, or the farmer's market, or Old Home Day. Troop 48 also has a history of helping the Carver community. For example, there's Steve Mantia who worked on the Shirtlift Park bathrooms, Ricky Butts who did the Veterans Memorial on the Carver Green, or Liam Kelly who built bat houses. So I'm just looking to continue this tradition of Troop 48 helping the Carver community. And I just have some questions possibly for you guys as well, thank you. So if this project is approved, there'll be some waste, obviously, because we're replacing the woodwork. I was wondering if you could point me to a person to contact in order to possibly use like the dumpster behind Town Hall for waste disposal?
That would be our DPW Superintendent John Woods.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Questions from the board?
In the manual, it talks of an Eagle project being a project of leadership. And so I'm assuming that you will be leading a team and not doing the work yourself as part of this. Does that hold true?
I might do some of the work myself, but it's definitely not going to be all me. We'd get, and I feel like part of the leadership process is getting together all the people and the supplies from other members of the troop.
Yeah, I agree totally, yeah. And by the way, I think it's a great project and I like that you showed up in your uniform. It absolutely is a sign of distinction and you wear it well. And I wish you best of luck with that as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Connor, this is a great project. I know, we talked about it a long time ago, you and I. And I just wanted, you probably remember this, but those plants, I believe, were donated by Mike Paddock, Crystal Lake. So he'd probably be the guy to talk to about, you know, upgrade. He's a real pro.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing this, it's terrific.
Other questions?
I don't have any questions, I just want to commend you for coming up with this project. As you said, there's a lot of different events that take part in Shirtlift Park and I think it's going to be a great addition. And I just thank you for coming forward to do this project.
Thank you.
Thank you for your leadership on the Scouts and for moving Shirtlift Park forward. It's going to be beautiful.
All that said, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve.
Second. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you very much. It's approved. And if at any point in time during the project you need to, you know, come back and see us, please feel free to do so.
Thank you.
Congratulations, that was a good choice.
Yes, sir. Please.
Bruce Skinner, 28 Deer Hill Lane, Connor's father. Connor will be taking care of the majority of the bandstand. One part of the project that he can't take care of because of safety regulations and whatnot is the roof, which is in pretty sad shape. Is there any plans on the part of the town to be addressing the rotting cedar roof? That would really look nice to dovetail in with what he's doing.
That might be something to talk to John, John Woods about as well, yeah.
I think we'll be in contact with the DPW director.
Okay. Maybe, maybe we can ask John to give us, try to get some repair estimates so we can put it on the.
On the schedule.
That would be nice.
Thank you, good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good luck.
Thanks, Connor.
Yep, just some plug in, plug in.
I believe we're tabling the appointment to commission disability for Roger Kilalea because he could not be here tonight.
He's just not here.
Oh, oh, I thought you were saying to table it.
No, no, he's just wasn't even, he's not able to come.
He's not able to be here, but we can still proceed with the appointment.
Yes.
I'm sorry, misunderstood. We have a request to appoint to the Commission on Disability Roger Kilalea. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we go ahead and appoint Roger Kilalea to the Commission, Commission on Disability.
Second.
Any further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. We move to the town administrator update, update on the fire station progress and discussion of the site tour.
Well, you all had the opportunity this evening to take a tour of the station and just wanted to open up for any comments, questions, concerns you have. You know, as you heard from the presentation by both, by both chiefs and that the project is under budget. The bids came in under budget, they're maintaining the project under budget and they hope to return some of the funds back to the town. You know, Bill was very modest in his, his discussion this afternoon. And I do have to say that Bill Harriman has put in an infinite amount of time, as has Chief Weston above and beyond the call of duty, to make sure that everything is being managed properly. And as I was half kidding over there but half truthful, they're reviewing the budget three times a day to make sure it's staying under there and catching items that just in the natural course of a construction project happen. They're making sure that those are all taken care of ahead of time. And with their leadership, I think they're really protecting the town. And, you know, I just want to make sure that Bill gets the credit that he deserves as well as Chief Weston because those two, along with the rest of the committee, have done a phenomenal job.
Did any of the members want to comment on the tour that we were just able to have?
From not ever been a firefighter, I will say that just in the building itself, the vision that they are looking at for what is needed 25, 30, 40 years down the line is being built now. It is a brilliant concept. And I was just very impressed with not what they need right now, but they're looking for the future of the town, which is, you know, it just doesn't get any better than that, I don't think. So I'm very impressed with the project.
So I, oh.
Sarah.
So I, just to dovetail into that too, I've had people come to me and complain about the size, but, you know, if you take off the bays that are for the new apparatus, it's really not that big a building. And one of the things they've foreseen in the future is maybe having to have a ladder truck one day. So one of the bays is just that much longer to contain a ladder truck. I wanted to, I just think the teamwork that's gone on there is so commendable. And I wanted to mention that they're saving a lot of money with all their energy saving plans that are on-site. And that's going to pay off hugely in the long run as well. And sort of another example of a great use of CPA funds, you probably heard that as well, that they were using CPA funds to have this whole historic display going back to 1910.
Beautiful.
Yeah, it's wonderful. And the last thing was, I don't know if any of you noticed, the orange crush can in the wall.
Yes, that was amazing.
Apparently, that's a little alcove with an orange crush can. And it's, it's a memorial to Zack Kane.
Yeah.
Because that was his favorite drink.
And they said they're going to have a few more throughout the building of memories of him, which was really nice.
I left there exceedingly impressed. I'd seen the design phase and, you know, I was on the department when we first dreamed of a new station 10, 15 years ago. So to see it reach this point. And as. Apparently, that's a little alcove with an orange crush can, and it's a memorial to Zack Kane.
Yeah.
Because that was his favorite drink.
And they said they're going to have a few more throughout the building of memories of him, which was really nice.
I left there exceedingly impressed. I'd seen the design phase, and, you know, I was on the department when we first dreamed of a new station 10, 15 years ago. So, to see it reach this point. And as David said, the amount of thought that's gone into this, so we have a station not for today, not just for tomorrow, next year, but for 30, 40, 50 years out and beyond. And the way that the department takes care of what the town gives to them, this building will last at least 70, 75 years. You talk about, yes, it looks awful big. By the time you throw in, from center station alone, two brush breakers, actually, three, if you throw in two, three, Engine One, tanker, rescue, hovercraft, that bay's going to fill up real quick. Fire equipment takes up a lot of space, and that's what gives the... Plus, the other thing is, it was explained to us, the ground has to come up to street level. So, it actually looks about three feet taller than what it actually is going to be once you bring ground a little, because it has to be level with 58, so they roll right on the street. I agree with the Town Administrator, retired Chief Harriman from the Dexbury Fire Department, and Chief Craig Weston, Deputy Jermaine, everybody associated with this project. The town really owes them a huge debt of gratitude. Basically, you have different type of overruns, change orders that go into any project, and the town has had made some change orders, but the ones you worry about are the unpristine change orders. Those are the ones that can really get out of hand. And I believe Chief Weston told us that basically the unanticipated change orders are only 35,000. For a project this size, that is absolutely phenomenal. They are working day and night to make sure this project stays under budget, and I think this will be a great model as we go forward for the school to be built under, keeping it under. And when we go ahead and next start working on Chief Doofle's new police station, once we get everybody... Get the fire department moved, because that's in the pipeline, too. And like I say, it's just, it's really amazing, and the town should be very, very proud of the team that's working on this, as well as the dataless and the different contractors. They've been really dedicated to this cause, so I was just super impressed. And as a former firefighter, 20 years, I am darn jealous.
And I just want to say, I did everything everyone was saying, but what impresses me and continues to impress me about Craig and Chief Harriman and Eric and the whole team is the camaraderie they create when they do projects like this. They were showing us different areas of the fire department where they continued to do volunteering work at their own time and expense. But plus, they're building rapport with the architects and the contractors by, you know, just little things like having a grill out there and grilling for them. But then they also have created like a medallion where anybody that has taken part in the building of the fire department, they're getting a little medallion with a picture of the fire department and just basically stating that they were part of the creation of this beautiful building. So, it's just class work all the way through. And I look forward to moving on to the police department after that.
It's an example of a project done right.
It was awesome. Very, very nice.
It was very impressive to... It seems as we'd be challenged to try to think of something they haven't already thought of.
Oh, my God.
And putting that together. And speaking to the size, the chief was explaining that they deliberately chose not to go with a flat roof. They've changed... They've had to fix the flat roof over here five times by going with a pitched roof. In 50-year shingles, they'll probably never have to touch the roof. So, again, they think of...
Makes it look great.
They seem to think of everything. So, it's been a great job. Move on, Town Administrator update, the update on the new elementary school progress and timetable for procurement.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. If I could, though, just before we go to that, I'd like to just share five other data points with you regarding the fire station and just emphasize a few points. One is that I need to emphasize from a capital outlay standpoint, from a maintenance standpoint, all of the product that's been put into that building is highly durable and low maintenance, as well as the building be energy-efficient. So, we're looking for some big savings in our annual upkeep of that building once it gets up and running. The second is, we talk about the plans and them working on making sure that unanticipated change orders are far and few in between. We did hear that the project is not going to be completed until, you know, mid-October. It was originally looked to be done on October 1st. But keep in mind, back about nine months ago, I updated the board that we had delayed the project initially two months because we weren't comfortable with the original construction plans that were ready to go out. The design team, basically Chief Weston, Chief Harriman, and their team found some errors that they wanted to have addressed prior to it going out to bid. So, that tightened up the documents, and that delay has clearly been reflected in the low amount of change orders that you're seeing. The second, there was discussion... A third, as you're talking about the bays and how there's, you know, it looks so big. We did look at initial cost-cutting component of going down to four bays. The cost savings to that was a little over $100,000, and we determined that it was insignificant to try to save that $100,000 for that extra bay. Not only do we have the equipment to put in there, but any equipment that's stored under a roof that doesn't have to go under four seasons of heating, cooling, and sunshine will last a lot longer. So, that $100,000 of additional cost that we didn't cut out for building that extra bay will pay dividends for our equipment in the long run. I know there was some brief talk about the long bay and what goes in that bay. I just want to be clear, because there's some confusion out there, is in the long-range plan of the fire department, it is to look at doing a platform truck, not a ladder truck. A ladder truck is something you can go up to four, five-story building. Again, we don't have that in town. A platform truck is the one that has a platform the size of this table that can go up with a water cannon on top of it so that the firefighters can access a roof, a normal roof in Carver, but more importantly, can spray water down on a fire which helps puts it out. So, that's really what that's designed for, is a platform truck that would go in there. Yes, it's long and similar to a ladder truck, but it's a different apparatus and a different use, which is what Carver can use. And then finally, you know, we are spending some money on this project. It is coming within our tax base. It is not causing any overrides to the town. It's not reducing any services to the town. But your fire department, that's led by Chief Weston and the team, you know, if we had to go to a full-time fire department, we'd be looking at an additional $2 million annually in operating cost. So, the cost of that building and the work they do to maintain that, I just need to continue to put that number out. It's a huge savings the town of Carver has. We're unique. We have great leadership to make sure that that uniqueness continues, and they provide a far superior fire protection service while saving the town's millions of dollars annually. To jump to the new elementary school, I have three updates, one on the new elementary school and two on the middle high school. Last night, we had another elementary school committee meeting last night, and that... The elementary school project, we are going to be going out to bid in August. We have our 90% plans were completed last month. We're in the process of completing the construction drawings. This architectural firm we have has a high rate of success of bringing projects in on time and on budget. And why we selected this architect is they have the lowest cost point for any of the MSBA projects around the state. So, we are looking, and we've also been able to shave about two weeks off of the schedule because we were worried about winter conditions. So, we're in a position right now where we are looking to have a notice to proceed on the project the earliest... We're looking at about September 14th, September 15th this year. So, we're going to be getting the bids in, and the sub-bids on September 6th, the general contractors bid on September 13th, and we will be looking to award almost momentarily after that. We are also working with a group that has several members of the committee to schedule and put together a groundbreaking. That probably won't occur until October, to there's some activity going on the site. But that's coming along very well, and it is staying under budget as far as our designs are called for. Second, we've just hired our project manager to oversee the gym construction, the new floor in the middle high school. So, we have a low bid for that. That has been accepted, and we're going to be moving forward and getting that started shortly to complete that for the summer.
And that's changed from the original plan, which was to put in the same sort of rubberized floor that we had before to go to a wooden floor now?
Correct. Due to different types of testing and moistures in the slab, it was determined that actually putting a wood floor in would be more durable and last longer for the building, although you do have the annual maintenance of stripping and re-polyurethaneing. It was the best product to put in there. So, yes, that is a change from the synthetic floor to a wooden floor. And then also, we had our initial kickoff meeting on Monday with the new OPM and the new designer that's going to be coming in to do the roof replacement, the new boilers, and also the windows and doors. As you may recall, that money was approved by town meeting, two town meetings ago. We did receive MSBA approval for that project this year, and we're on a schedule to have our schematic design submitted to MSBA on September 29th. By making that schedule, that should allow us to have the majority of the roof and the boilers done during the summer of next year. Right now, that is the original roof on the building, except for the additions, and during a good rainstorm, we have anywhere from 50 to 70 documented leaks. So, it's past its useful life. We've tried to patch it, and it just needs to be done, and it's a priority, and that's what we're working on. So, again, from that standpoint, that's all real good with the new elementary school and capital projects that have been approved for the middle high school.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
MSBA is still very happy with us for the elementary project?
Yes, they're very happy. There's no issues that we have with MSBA. That's also one of the quickest projects that has actually gone from concept and design to actually bidding out. We're moving along extremely fast. Time is money. As we've talked about, what the carrying cost is per month for just inflation cost of capital stuff. So, no, everyone is very happy. There are no issues with that project at all. We are going to be going out... We have a subcommittee that's going to be meeting to do pre-qualifications of all our bidders. And our only concern that we have out there is that we need to get three bidders for every trade that's out there, the 16 trades. And it's always a challenge to make sure you get three companies that bid on the elevators because there's not a lot of elevator companies in the state. Other than that, we're looking good.
Thank you.
DEP Administrative Consent Order for Treatment Upgrades.
Yes. Currently, right now, all our drinking water supply in the town is perfectly safe, healthy. There's no issues from a DEP environmental standpoint. Last year, town meeting approved us going forward with a green sand-plus filtration system for the back here of Town Hall to filter out some of the manganese, which discolors the water. We're also moving forward with the new elementary school to put a green sand-plus system in the new building when that goes up. And with this consent order with DEP, we're going to be looking to upgrade the middle high school and also put in the same type of system. We want to have the... Basically, our water's all the same right around here, so we want to have the same-type treatment system so we have the same maintenance issues to deal with. And DEP has given us a year and a half after Scott Neef and I went and met with them. They originally wanted us to do it in the next year. We said, "We have to go to town meeting, and then we have to bid this out," et cetera, et cetera. So, we have a year and a half to implement this new system, which, you know, again, will be very similar to what's behind Town Hall and what's going to be in the new elementary school. I have to emphasize again, there's no contaminant issue. There's no problems with our drinking water today. We're just trying to make it better.
And so, the funding will be arranged as we go into fiscal '18?
That's correct, and we'll do that through capital outlay, through the funding mechanism there.
Budget transfers for fiscal year '16?
Yes. Our finances are doing extremely well this year. I want to point out a couple things. It appears that our public safety budgets, led by the police, the fire, and then we also have animal control and in that category, those are all going to come in under budget or within budget. So, Chief Doofle, Chief Weston have done a great job, you know, keeping everything within budget. We're not looking for any more money to balance that out. So, public safety's done a great job with that. I also want to say that... So, those are our three biggest departments, our biggest departments is public safety. So, again, phenomenal job there. Public Works also doing a great job, you know, with the exception of snow and ice, which we put $120,000 in at town meeting in supplemental money. Due to the additional salting we had to do this year due to ice buildups we had on the road, all of their other programs and systems, they're able to maintain the cemeteries, maintain the roads, do the sweeping, et cetera, and that's all within budget, too. So, again, two great areas. We do have a finance committee meeting set up later on this week, on Thursday. We're asking them to make two reserve fund transfers. The first is for the additional... We need additional $32,000, $33,000 for snow and ice that they'll be looking to take out of the reserve fund to balance that for the year. As you may recall, the snow and ice account is always underfunded. In the FY '17 budget, we actually started to grow that to try to catch up with inflation, but it's going to continue to require supplemental funds just because of the cost of snow, ice, or actually, salt and sand, and the labor that it takes to put that down there. The second is, and this is also a lower number than in the past, is our veteran benefits. We currently had budgeted $220,000. It's coming in at around $227,000, so it's a $7,000 difference. As many of you may recall, in prior years, that's $20,000, $30,000, $50,000 based upon the services that are done. And it's one of those items that's not necessarily always predictable because it's based upon the needs of the veterans that are within the town of Carver during that fiscal year. So, those two items are going to be... They're on the agenda for the finance committee. What I'm going to pass around right now is, within the Board of Selectment's control, is I'm asking for, after working with the town accountant, for you to transfer $8,700, again, only $8,700, from some other accounts to supplement accounts that have gone over this year. What is a little unique here is that we still have one more warrant to come out. We think we've tried to capture all of those expenses, but there may be a need for another couple thousand-dollar transfers. And what I would do is ask you to authorize the chairman just to sign off on any insignificant transfers that may happen over the next week to cover that. So, what we have here is, the first item is to transfer about $3,000 from the town gasoline account to the Board of Selectment salaries. This is to cover the SDI union agreement that we did, which actually had an incentive payment for signing the contract. We were able to cover about 80% of that within our existing budget, but we fell $3,000 short to do that, so we need to move $3,000 over. The second is an additional $3,000 from the town gasoline account for assessing operations, primarily due to some reevaluation issues. Again, a small number. We are looking at about $2,000 from the town gasoline account for the town clerk's office to pay for the additional election that we had this year, the special election that was not planned or budgeted. So, that's to cover the expenses for that. And then there's an additional $47,000 to the council and aging salaries, an additional...
That's $47.90.
$47.90.
Not $47,000.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I definitely glad you called me on that one, because I don't know how we would have dealt with those means. Because that wouldn't have added up to $8,700.
Something was wrong.
No.
It's the summer.
And the last item is $609.20 to the veterans' aging salary account, just to close that account out. So, again, from years past, as you may recall, we would have two or three pages of budget transfers that would be in sometimes significant money. We're keeping that tight. We're living within our means. And so, I'd be asking for a vote to authorize the $8,725 from the fund specified to... Transferred from the fund specified to the funds that are also specified per this document and to authorize the chairman to sign off on any additional transfers that may be done next week that are in this... sign off on any additional transfers that may be done next week that are in this order of magnitude by the, by our new finance director.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, I was just wondering, you say you're transferring this from Board of Health salaries. Is that, whose Board of Health salary is that being transferred from?
Well, it's in the category how we have the budget, so it's surplus funds. So these, all these accounts are in the positive, on the right side, so these are surplus funds that we'll be transferring that from.
I was just wondering, how do you have surplus funds in the Board of Health salaries?
They were, it's $47.90, I think it was just a rounding issue.
And the $600?
Oh, I'm sorry, and the $609.
I mean, in other words, is this from the health agent salary? Is it from the Board of Health members' salaries? I just was wondering where that money's coming from.
I, it's probably a combination of the Board of Health agent salary from last year, and also from the administrative assistant in there that was rounded off. I mean, I'm $656, so I'm assuming it was rounding off, I don't know what else to tell you about.
Nobody's losing any money as a result of it. For whatever reason, it was overestimated what needed to be in the budget, and this is left over.
Correct.
Other questions? No further discussion. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And now for an update on the Carver Redevelopment Authority anticipated schedule.
Yes, I spoke to Will Sinclair, the chairman of the Redevelopment Authority this afternoon, actually, we'll be doing a site tour. They have their next meeting scheduled for July 18th, which is next Monday, at 7:00 PM, I believe. And it's to, they're hoping to have a draft urban renewal plan for their committee to start to review and discuss. In addition to that, as part of the draft urban renewal plan, they also have a draft market study that you've also received copies of, and that'll be incorporated into the draft urban renewal plan. Again, that they'll start their deliberations with next Monday. I don't anticipate they're going to have a final document on Monday. I'm sure they're going to need at least one more meeting before they look at a plan that they want to submit to the Board of Selectmen to begin the public hearing process. But again, there will be an additional meeting this Monday, the 18th, and that's what their intention is.
What room?
I believe they'll have it here.
Generally in here.
Yeah, and it will be televised.
It'll be televised live?
Live.
Live?
I believe so.
Okay. And do we know at this time if the agenda's been set and if there's a public comment period? Or is this going to be more of a working meeting where they would preclude a public comment period?
I haven't seen the agenda, but my guess is it's probably going to be more of a working meeting. I have not asked them if they're going to take public comment. I just don't know the answer to that question.
That's fine.
But I know there's work that needs to be done, so at least it's going to be that.
Thank you. Market overview study for the town of Carver.
So that's part of the urban renewal plan that you would have received the draft of. This was commissioned by the Redevelopment Authority from XSM Associates. And again, they're going to be discussing that on Monday and going through some of the details of that. So that's there for your information. And once they finalize it, we'll make sure we have a finalized copy. But it is useful information for you to utilize, you know, in your future deliberations on things that reflect economic development evaluation in the town.
So you weren't looking for a comment on it from us tonight?
Well, no, I'm not, because it's not my document, it's not our document, it's the Redevelopment Authority's document. If you want to give comments, I...
I do have some, though I want to give them.
Then let's get those to the Redevelopment Authority, and either by email or calling Will directly, or on Monday's meeting. Or you can send it to our office, and we'll make sure that we...
I'll probably do that, I'll probably send it to Elaine.
Okay.
With a CCDU, and you can forward it on to Chairman Sinclair.
Perfect.
Discussion of intent to recommend reappointment of the police chief at the next meeting.
Yes. Two years ago, after I had been here a few months, I had come to the Board of Selectmen and asked to reappoint Chief Dufulley for an additional three-year term, which you granted. That term will end June 30th of next year, so he still has another 11-plus months left on his contract. In that, and I'll go over this in more detail at the next meeting, but I just want to just kind of give a heads up on it, and that way, if people have questions, that they can bring to those to me before the next meeting, and I can start to update you on it. There were several objectives that Mark had in his, in his, in his, in his contract, some goals and objectives that he had, and certainly, I think, coming in with another balanced budget satisfies his financial acumen in being able to manage his department, which I will say, and although he probably won't admit this, but most chiefs, police chiefs have a challenge with managing their budgets in a year, so he's in the upper echelon of doing that, particularly multiple years in a row. Another thing that the chief was asked to do was to go forward and finalize his Masters in Criminal Justice. He did that this year, I have a diploma.
Congratulations.
It's not really signed or stamped, but...
I got one. You're going to say, "Did that come up a copy or somehow?"
It looks good, it's late 2016.
At least you could have done it with having framed chief.
You know, I'm going to take the word of the most honorable man in town, just by position, so it's true. So again, I think you've seen some positive with the war on drugs that we've been doing in town and some other initiatives that you've asked to do. They've been coming along very positive, so at our next meeting, I will be providing a little bit more detailed update, but my intention would be to put that on the agenda for your next meeting, to reappoint Chief Dufulley for a new contract.
And finally, Human Resource Policy Procedure Audit Status Update.
We, town meeting authorized funds to go forward and to reevaluate our HR system, and one of the things that Elaine Weston, who is now our Assistant Town Administrator/Human Resource Coordinator, and I did a few weeks ago, was we engaged the services of Municipal Resources, Inc., who have on their team HR professionals, and many of them who have done HR work in municipalities. And we asked them, just opened all the doors, pulled out all the file cabinets, gave them access to several of the larger departments in town, and said, "Dig through our files, ask any questions, put together a list and determine where we're deficient, what our improvements are that we need to do. If we're doing things well, we'd like to know those too, but really, what is our game plan to move forward?" What you have in front of us is a draft report of that, I just make sure you have that to share. We're going to be discussing that internally with the staff, but again, I think you'll see that there are several things that need to be done, but at the same token, you know, we have made some strides into better protecting the town, but we still have a long way to
Very well. We'll move on to the Board of Selectmen updates, and we will start with David.
I know, I just have something brief for to say, if it's okay.
Apparently, you're clearing the room, David, as soon as I turn it over to you.
This is a breath analyzer and...
Would you like an icebreaker?
Actually, it's on a personal nature. We live in a global world, but anything that happens globally, we look at it, how it impacts us locally. And I will tell you that after the Dallas events, I thought of our police force all weekend long. I couldn't get them out of my head, and I had the opportunity to speak to a couple of officers, and they've been overwhelmed by community support, and I can't, can't express my gratitude for having this force protecting us. I can't thank them enough, so I may not be on the docket, but I wanted to say that out loud.
Thank you very much. Could I, do you mind if I just ask Mark to address that for a second? He wanted to address it at the beginning of the meeting, but we talked too much about air conditioners. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a few minutes to recognize that as well, with the tragedy that happened over the past week in Dallas and several other police officers who've lost their lives this week in the community, I mean, in the country. We've had an overwhelming of support from the community, which we always enjoy. We're very, very fortunate to be able to serve this community, and they, they support us in every way they can. But the expressions of support and love that came in over the weekend, people dropping off baked goods, Papaginos sent pizzas over. And it's not just unique to Carver, it's been happening in a lot of the area police departments, but I wanted to express my thanks to the community as a whole, the citizens we have, the Board of Selectmen we have, the people that make this community what it is. In times like this, that are trying for law enforcement as a profession, we have a great bunch of people in this town that completely support us. And I think that that's true throughout the country. I think that that's a silent majority that's out there that supports the police and a vocal minority that doesn't, but that's, that's not the point of this conversation. The point is that we do enjoy a great deal of support from our community, and we greatly appreciate it. It means a lot to all of us. So thank you very much, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to thank you and the community. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Before you leave, chief, if I could go next, real quick, I wanted to remind everybody, National Night Out is coming up, I believe that's...
Carver Night Out this night.
Okay, Carver.
We've gotten away from the National Night Out, that's copyrighted, so we're going to do it on a different night, two days later.
It's on August 4th or 8th?
August 4th, 5 to 9.
5 to 9, at what time?
5 to 9 at the Carver High School.
Okay, and I would really encourage everybody, because you know, I'm going to have the police department there, you'll have EMS, you'll have fire department, you'll get to be able to see a little bit more of what they do. But more importantly, it's a chance, it'll be a chance for the community, especially at this time, to come and thank all our first responders.
Yep.
Who basically, when everybody else is running away, be it from a fire, bank robbery, whatever, they're running to that danger. They're putting themselves between us and the danger. And I think this will be a great opportunity for the citizens of the town to come out and just, just say thank you.
Yep.
So I wanted to make sure we got that out there.
Thank you. The police union has worked hard to put it again together this year with a lot of donations from the community.
Is there a dunk tank this year?
It'll be a great night. I think there will be a dunk tank, and I think, I think you're supposed to nominate somebody from the board to...
Nominate Helen?
I believe that I've...
I'll be on vacation again.
Those in favor say aye, those opposed?
So I'd nominate the chairman.
Second, and that was official.
At least they started using clean water. The first year was some kind of bogged water.
We'll work on this.
Thank you again, and we would love to see everybody come out. It is a great celebration of the community with the public service people from the community, so it's a good night.
Union usually has some great raffles there, too.
Yes, yeah, we've got a, we've got a bunch of good things to raffle off again, including a...
Wasn't there a little police car last year?
There is, and they got another one this year, and actually, there's a, we're doing a little doling up this year to make it a little bit more unique to Carver, so.
Couldn't have the... So there's the martial golf certificates last year.
Yeah, that was good.
Police dogs will be in again?
The dogs, the sheriff's department will be supplying us with their canines, a BCI, horses. The sheriff's got some antique police cars he brings. We've been able to secure the air wing to bring the helicopter in this year. The reason we moved the night from the National Night Out to Carver Night Out is, everybody does National Night Out, and the resources in the area are limited, so in order to be able to get better access of the resources, we moved it over two days, which was, was a good idea on the union's spot, and it's worked out very well.
Excellent.
Mr. Chair, before the chief leaves, I just want to point something else out, if I may?
Please do.
If I may. I too was thinking about our first responders a lot, and I'm sure we all were, and I wanted to mention the fact that the police department is running the Junior Police Explorers Program at Y-PAC, the Young People's Alliance of Carver. This is our after-school program for middle school kids. That program really boosted the enrollment in Y-PAC, and I understand that they're doing it again.
Yes.
I also wanted to point out that the EMS department and the fire department have also done their part down at Y-PAC, and we just appreciate that so much.
Thank you.
It's meant a lot to the kids and their families, and I think it's going to have an impact.
Very good, good program, and it's brought a lot for both sides, both for us and for the kids, and I'm glad it's helped to boost enrollment. It's an important thing to be on. Officer Mello will be also conducting the, taking some students from Carver to the deer camp, the District Attorney's Deer Camp at the end of July, which is another good, important thing to be doing, so making those connections with our youth is, is key to moving forward, especially in this drug problem, so that we can help people to make better life choices. And I think Officer Mello is key to that, having him in the, in the schools and helping out that, and doing the programs at Y-PAC are also key to that. So thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Where were we? Were you done?
I was done, yeah.
All right, Sarah, did you go?
Yes, I just did.
All right, Helen.
This may not be totally politically correct, but I'm known to not be totally politically correct, but with all the sadness and fear for the police force across the nation, there is a prayer chain going around nationwide at 7:00 Eastern Standard Time every single night. If you can just take a moment and pray for our country and for our police and all the first responders that are in danger, and all of the citizens that are in danger, prayer is powerful, so I just wanted to let everybody know that.
Amen to that.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments to my fellow selectmen. We are each supposed to be taking a look at the 20 committees that were provided to us, and ask that you indicate to send in to the staff which committees you're interested in, maybe have a couple in reserve. It's nothing we're going to work out publicly here, but after everyone has them in, then there may have to be some horse trading. I know the COA seems to be a popular choice, although, Carving?
They did make...
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm just saying that over the next, by the time we get to August, hopefully, if we can get that all resolved, and we know who has what, then we can just announce what, who will be theirs onto what. And again, just to reinforce this, the idea came up that it would just be helpful if perhaps the Board of Selectmen had some contact with committees, you know, around the, around the town. You don't, you're not required to attend every meeting. I think the idea is that you may want to attend some meetings, you may want to just be in touch with members and the chair.
Yep.
And then if anything of significance comes up, or you, and just when we get to selectmen's notes, it's an opportunity to bring the rest of the board up to speed on what's going on, so it's not supposed to be burdensome, everyone's already got a full, full plate, but just as you're thinking about what to get involved, what committees to get involved with, just keep, sort of keep that in mind, and then, once they're all in, we can do some horse trading and see who ends up getting, you know, which committees and whatnot. All right?
Not on horse trade, so I got to get what I chose, so, sorry.
Well, how to be a team player.
Moving on, just a reminder to all the committees and boards in town, that it's incumbent upon the chairs of those committees, if they want to have their meeting shown on cable and put up on the website, they need to make sure they're getting in touch with Area 58 and advising them that they would like to have that televised, and try to do it, you know, not five hours ahead of time. Try to give as much notice as possible, you know, preferably a week, because they have the schedule. We're covering Plimpton, Halifax, and Carver, and so we need to make sure we have volunteers in place and/or staff to go cover those things. So just a reminder out to the chairs at large, that if they could just remember that it's incumbent upon them, if something does not get covered, it's not Area 58's fault, it's because no one told Area 58 that something's supposed to be covered, so. And then, since we're being politically incorrect...
Oh, good. I'm glad you're joining my bandwagon.
Well, I just wanted to state that it should be noted that from among the Board of Selectmen, one of us is running for state representative, and that's Sarah Hewens, so I just wanted to acknowledge, Sarah, that you're running for state representative on the Democratic ticket.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That being said, we move on now to ratification of the SEIU clerical contract for FY '17 to '19.
Take it away.
So, members of the board, we have been...
Microphone, Michael.
Microphone?
Yep. Thank you.
Members of the board, we have been working with all of our unions to negotiate successor collective bargaining agreements. As you may recall, last year, we entered into an agreement with the Department of Public Works and all of their employees, including custodial. At your last meeting, we also went through the new personnel code for non-union employees. And now, with an agreement reached with the SEI Clerical Union, they have also agreed to the... the SEIU Clerical Union, uh, they have also agreed, um, to the similar type, um, employee benefits that we have with the DPW and with the non-union employees. Um, what I mean by that is that, um, as we all know, some of the, um, uh, rising cost of healthcare and some of the benefits the town, uh, receives are, are, are very beneficial, and we need to make sure that we can live within our budgeted amount to make sure we can afford the employees we have today, and therefore, there needs to be a little give and take from all parties. So, uh, I'm just gonna hit a couple of the major items that have been resolved with the SEIU Union. Uh, the first is that, um, they now have a bifurcated contract. So these benefit changes, uh, impact new hires. So existing hires are grandfathered under the benefits they were hired under, those aren't changing, but these are benefits for, um, uh, for new hires. And that includes reducing the amount of sick days earned per year from 15 sick days per year down to nine sick days per year. It includes, um, not allowing four weeks of vacation at seven years and now allowing it at 15 years versus, again, the seven years for new employees. It also changes, uh, for healthcare, and, and there are some issues with healthcare that we have to address, uh, between our different plans. Um, but for new employees, they would contribute equally to healthcare at 50/50, where existing employees, uh, contribute, uh, 25% and the town picks up 75%. Um, so that's an example of some of, um, the benefit changes, uh, that we have. Um, also, very importantly, is that, um, the Clerical Union, like the non-union employees, like the DPW, have all agreed to follow and abide by the Board of Selectmen's, um, uh, Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy and Program that you approved. So as an objective of the Board of Selectmen, you want to take a strong effort on trying to help curb some of the, uh, drug abuse in the town, and we all know the heroin issue that's going on. Um, you've also made a true, uh, a requirement for the employees that have accepted this through these Union contracts, that they must abide by these types of agreements as well. So, uh, the SEIU Union did, did do that. Um, with that all being said, um, we did, um, what they did receive is they did receive a one-time payment, um, of a thousand dollars for part-time employees and fifteen hundred dollars for full-time employees, and that was paid this fiscal year, that's why I had to transfer that three thousand, that's six thousand dollars at the beginning of the meeting, three thousand. Um, in addition to that, uh, we have not done any, um, uh, cost of living increases. What we did do is with the salary chart, we did increase that and add an additional steps into that, uh, over, over a few years. So you go from a, uh, 12-step plan to a 15-step plan, and again, that will take place over a couple of years with some dropping of some of the earlier steps, too, to reflect new employees coming in that will have to pick up their healthcare on their own. So those are the highlights, and, and as you know, Alan was intimately involved in negotiating this, so I'm sure he has, uh, some additional things that I may have missed or want to draw some attention to some of those other items.
Uh, now you hit it pretty much everything. The one thing I'd like to point out is, this contract, I think, is extremely fair. It's not only fair to the taxpayers of the town, but we're also able to go ahead and provide some protection for the employees themselves by removing the cost of living increases, because in a, if you get into a tight budget year, the first thing to go is a cost of living increase. This way, they don't have to worry about that, it's built into the increases in the step system, and having them in the step system itself makes it a lot easier to budget. As part of the discussion I've had, you know, I had with Michael while we're doing this and making these offers, is that if you're a manager, you should be able to make your budget by knowing your steps. Sometimes it's not easy with the COLA, trying to come up with a COLA each year, but by knowing your steps, you should be able to budget it. If you can't budget it, then you shouldn't be making a budget. So it's something that provides both protection for the town and for the employees themselves, um, and, uh, them going along with a 50/50. While that may be a fairly, you know, small change savings right now, you start going three, four years out, that'll start being substantial savings to the town of Carver and our tax base. So we'll be able to keep these employees in the town, and we won't have to end up reducing staff because we just can't afford them. So I would strongly urge the Board to go ahead and ratify this contract from our perspective.
The steps are just for, uh, the steps are 2% each year. What's the pleasure of the Board?
I'll make the motion to approve the ratification of the SEIU Clerical Contract.
Yep, I'll second that. Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
And thank you, Alan and Michael.
I know they spent a lot of hours going through that.
They spent a lot of hours on this.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, ratification of, I'm guessing that's a memorandum of agreement with the Police Union, uh, on Senior Officer Pay?
That is correct.
Do it?
No, you can do that. You're on a roll, Michael. I, I was just a participant. You're doing, you're doing fine.
Um, with a contract that was negotiated, um, a decade or so ago, um, uh, police office, officers, um, were allowed to take an item called a Senior Officer Pay, and, and...
Chief, come up here in case I miss a data point in this, cause you can help clarify too. And with that, once they, um, received, uh, or had, um, they can collect up to 200, uh, days per year, they were able to, in essence, sell back, um, some of those days, uh, up to 75% of that number, um, which resulted in about a 20% increase. Want to, you know what? I'm gonna ask the Chief to explain that. Chief?
Senior Officer Pay was a, a way to allow them to sell back, um, contractually, at the end of your career, when you retire, you can sell back 75% of your sick days. It was a method to, um, allow that to happen over a three-year period. Um, so it, in, in essence, brought your, um, if you had the 200 days and you sold back 75 days, it would bring your, um, pay rate up by about 20% a week, one day's pay a week. Um, so instead of having a lump payment at the end, the town was paying it over a three-year period. Um, that, that, uh, process did add to, to increase, uh, the officer's overtime rate, and at the time it was originally negotiated, it, uh, was to help with, uh, increasing their retirement benefits. That has since changed, uh, with the, uh, change in state law in 2008, so that does not affect retirement benefits any further. Um, so that's an explanation of how the, the plan works, and, um, we've, we've, this document, uh, just defines that that can only happen once in your career, um, and that any additional, if you, if you do it, uh, at 13 and a half years, you've maxed out at 200 days. If you did it then, uh, and you, and you earned, and you stayed working for the town for another 13 and a half years and earned more days, um, then you, if you did sell them back, that increase would not add to your overtime rate, therefore, again, double, uh, increasing your salary by 20% for those three years.
Yeah, basically, it was designed for a one-time deal, and they ended up doing, able, officers were doing it multiple, at least twice. And somebody, didn't somebody try to do it a third time?
No, just twice.
No, just twice.
Just twice.
But in other words, in Cre- you know, taking this benefit and really getting a lot of extra money when it wasn't the intent. So we went into the negotiations to get it back, to make sure it's in the contract by this MOU, but it's only gonna be done once a career.
So this essentially resolves the issues between, uh, management and the Union?
Yes, there were some differences in opinion as to what, you know, how often you could do that, and, uh, this, uh, document, the negotiation that went on, uh, resolves that issue in a, in a manner that's, I believe, fair to both the town and to the, to the Union members.
Do we need two signatures from the Police Union on this?
Uh, no, for an MOA, we can just get one from that. Um, and, and just, I'm sorry, just one other quick thing on here is, in the, when, when there's some transition, when we, uh, when Rick LaFawn left, who had institutional knowledge, and when we had an interim Town Administrator, um, and, and when the former Chief left, um, that's where we got into what the definition of the language was, and there were some mistakes on both management and the Union side in having somebody go there for more than once. So it wasn't, it was, it was a combination of errors, and because the language was not as, the intent was clear, the language wasn't clear. Now this tightens up the language and makes it very clear as to what the direction is. For an MOA, once the Board authorizes you to sign it, Ron, on behalf of the Board, um, the, the Union would authorize, um, uh, the President of the Union to sign that as well. Uh, this has an additional signature on here that, uh, is being requested, uh, because, um, there are three grievances that the Union has filed on this, when Chief Dufly and I were, um, not allowing people to take it twice based upon the intent. This resolves those grievances to a mutual beneficial agreement between all parties.
It's the pleasure of the Board?
I move, uh, we approve the, um, MOA.
Second.
With the Police Union and on the Senior Officer Pay.
Second.
Further discussion? Being none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Another great success.
The ayes have it. Thank you.
Do we need to vote to authorize the Chair to...
Did, did that vote include authorization for the Chair to sign the document?
An authorization for the Chair to sign the document.
Seems like a friendly amendment that everyone just made.
There a second to that?
Second.
Clear. Further discussion, those in favor say aye, those opposed, the ayes have it.
Chair's authorized.
Uh, we move on now to the GATRA Drug and Alcohol Policy.
Um, yes, the Drug, the, um...
Easy for you to say.
This is, um, in addition to, uh, the Board of Selectmen's Drug and Alcohol Policy, uh, because we accept federal funds for, uh, allowing for GATRA transportation, the Board of Selectmen also has to approve the GATRA, which follows the federal regulations, zero tolerance for drug and alcohol testing policy for the town of Carver. So this is a requirement based upon an audit that the federal government had with the GATRA program, and we need you to authorize this as well.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Move on to the Annual Appointment of Election Officers. You should have a list in front of you. What is the pleasure of the Board?
Move that we appoint this list of election officers.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yes, um, I'm on the assumption, shouldn't it be residents of the town of Carver, because I noticed Kathy Dougherty is still on here and she no longer lives in the town of Carver?
I don't believe it's a requirement, it could be a preference, but I don't think it's a requirement.
That's not, to Helen's point, that's not her current address.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
So...
So I think that she should be deleted from the list and then put the amended.
I, I don't know, what, what I do know is that, um, our town clerk has a challenge getting enough people.
Yeah, I was worried about that as well.
So if, um, if she hasn't, if she doesn't have enough people, I mean, obviously, a preference should always be given to Carver residents where possible, unless there's somebody that has years of knowledge that may be helpful. But short of that, um, I, I would encourage that we have as many people as possible, given the fact that I know time and time again, she's stressing out, struggling, trying to get enough people there for the...
But this isn't legitimate, that's not her address right now, so I think...
Okay, well, I, I suggest we just get her new address and then make sure Lynn needs her, cause I, I agree with, with Michael, I know it's always a struggle, um, getting enough election workers.
We are, we have about 40 right here, so I'm, I made the motion that I would, to approve it, subject to Kathy Dougherty being eliminated from the list, cause she's not a resident.
Well, I, I think we should ask the town clerk, Mr. Chair. I, this is the list she gave us, and, uh, the address is wrong, you know?
Well, it's our job to approve it.
Uh, motion was made to drop Kathy Dougherty, was there a second?
What we could do is, we can always come back at our next meeting and add people if need be.
Right. Give all the Carver residents the opportunity.
Uh, well, you know, we, we actually, uh, we, we could just table this tonight's meeting.
I was gonna say, Mr. Chairman, I think we should just table this, because it's, there's not a big rush on this, there's no likely coming up.
I don't think there's any elections coming up between now and, uh, our August meeting.
I don't recall what Lynn said to me, but there was something time-sensitive about having this. Um, someone asked you not to table the whole list. Uh, if anything, table one name, but, but, um, I, I don't recall why, but I believe she said that she needed to get this approved.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll amend my motion that we accept the list, uh, and table the name Kathy Dougherty until we get clarification and at least the correct address.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree, we should have the correct address to, before approving, so.
We could...
Was there a, a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. We move on now to a discussion of Bob Belbin's multiple open meeting complaints and legal response.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a proposed motion that has been recommended, uh, by, um, our Town Council, and to read that motion, uh, and, and just for background, our Town Council is reviewing, uh, the complaints, uh, filed by Mr. Belbin, um, that date back to 2014. Uh, they're from 2014 to 2015. Um, and, uh, the, the motion is, I move that the Board acknowledge receipt of the five open meeting law complaints filed by, from Robert Belbin concerning his review of the Board's executive session minutes from five prior meetings held on March 11th, May 27th, and June 5th, 2014, and January 20th, and May 19th, 2015, and that the Board authorize the Town Administrator work with Town Council to submit a response to the Attorney General on behalf of the Board's behalf.
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion?
Yep.
Those in favor say aye.
Did these all come in at the same time?
Oh, yeah.
Aye.
Wow.
The, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Um, I have two other quick things, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one is, um, Mile Standis State Forest is having a centennial celebration on July 16th, this Saturday. Um, and there's an event, a speaking program starting at noon, the activities will be from 10 to 4 p.m.
And that is a charge pond, I believe. It's a charge pond.
It's a charge pond. It's a charge pond on Cranberry Road.
Well, for those who don't know how to get there, you have to go down Cranberry Road first, then up past Barrett's Pond, all the way around, and then back down to get the charge pond.
It's now Cranberry Road, yeah.
Yeah. Um, basically, it's, if the bridge had ever been repaired, that fell in, down by Forest Headquarters, it would be a straight shot, but now you gotta really go up and around.
Uh, and the second thing, Mr. Chairman, is, um, in regarding the, uh, meeting with the Council on Aging and Board of Directors, um, what I would suggest, uh, to the Board is that, um, you know, as an analogy, if we had a complaint, uh, from someone that didn't appreciate how the Board of Assessors was assessing an issue or complaining about the Board of Assessors, uh, Director, we would want the Board of Assessors to, you know, be the ones that would handle the issue, and then if they weren't able to handle the issue, or even after they heard the issue, then bring it to our attention, because that's technically the area of expertise, uh, just like the Council on Aging is responsible for the activities going on down at the, uh, the Outer Affairs, uh, facility. Um, so what I'm just gonna suggest is that, um, that I ask the Council on Aging Committee to, uh, Board of Directors to meet with Mary Ann and Nancy Ryan and any others first, as a meeting to see if they can resolve their issues and prioritize it, and then that would allow the Council on Aging Board of Directors to be educated and updated in what their concerns are, and then you'd be able to hear from the, uh, the Board of Directors as to what their recommendations are, um, for the town.
And also by...
And bring that back, whether that's in August or the first meeting in September, but to allow that process to take place, because we do owe it to the Boards to, to have their ability to review something within their bailiwick before the Board of Selectmen try to intercede on behalf of, um, a, a process.
Do I, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you're welcome.
Um, Mary Ann and Nancy, I, I, I think the, I think it's great that you're wor- working out a solution. Um, however, I know that, um, the group that was here tonight have gone to that Board several times, so I'm not sure if having a meeting with Nancy and Mary Ann at this point is gonna be in vain, if you will, that I think we should just go to the next step. They already know their concerns and take it from there as to what you think would be the best action, but they have gone to the Board several, several times.
Yeah, they, they actually said that here tonight, that was my interest, that's what I heard.
Again, to Michael's point, I would like to actually at least have the, and I, and we have time, the next meeting's not till mid-August. Uh, I, I think we need to give the, the Board of Directors an opportunity to, uh, have a conversation, uh, with the Town Administrator or whoever.
Absolutely, yeah.
And, and reach out to any of us to find out, it, we have, we've, we've had people come before us with legitimate complaints...
us with legitimate complaints. I do think it's important, let's say someone came and were complaining about the board of selectmen to somebody else, well, sometimes they go to the Attorney General's office and, and without coming to us first. And so, would be nice if perhaps we were able to, I think it's important that we hear the other side of the story before making any final judgment. So, I would ask that perhaps we get some feedback from the board of directors that can be sent out to each of us prior to the next meeting.
Oh, I absolutely agree, and that's what I was saying, is just go that next step. You definitely want to hear from them. I just don't think, I think it's, it is passed now that Mary Ann and Nancy talk with them again, that's all I was saying.
Well, and I guess my only point is that if they come back and say that, that no one's ever approached them, now we've got a different situation than, and I'm not saying that's the case. I'm just putting myself in the position of another board.
No, I agree.
Where someone is, you know, is, is speaking about us and we haven't...
Agreed.
And then someone else takes action without even checking with us to see what our position is.
Well, it is respectful to, to ask them.
Right.
And then, and then we can share all that information in leading up to the next meeting.
Awesome, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no.
Awesome, Mr. Chairman, it'll give us, everybody a chance to be very concise with what their problems were, so we're not having a bunch of he said, she said type situations, where we can have just, you know, bullet points that we can go ahead and work on, and because generally, if you know exactly what the problem is, it's easier to help fix that rather than just a whole range of things being heaped upon us at one time.
I get it. That makes sense.
And we did have, I think, many of the board of selectmen wanted to serve as liaison with the COA, and that certainly could only help, I think, going forward for items of this nature.
Yep.
Okay. Yes, Michael?
So, you had your chance.
As it relates to the open meeting complaint, we had talked about putting together an open meeting law presentation.
Yes.
And it keeps on getting pushed off just due to scheduling conflicts. What I'm suggesting is that our meeting on September 20th, that we have town council come in, do a session in the late afternoon with staff, you know, between 3:00 and 5:00, and then maybe from 6:00 to 8:00, then do a presentation with all other boards, committees, commissions, and the board of selectmen, and then we would start our meeting at 8:00 and try to keep the agenda short that night.
Sorry.
We'll certainly take that under advisement.
That's a terrible...
Sorry, Michael.
No, you're not.
No, I'm not.
No, it is, the, the, the open meeting law is something we have to take very seriously, and so that, I think to the extent that we're all on the same page and understand, because I, like anything else, things can be carried to with the extreme.
Right.
And you could almost paralyze government from being able to move forward, depending on how strictly you interpret things, so.
And we had promised Bob Bellman as well, that that was one of the items that we would do to show good faith, that we do, we are concerned about the open meeting law.
So, let's, let's make that a working process, a working thought process.
Working thought process. We do have new regulations that'll be going into effect January 1st, based upon what the state just approved, what's our more owners than we have right now. So, we need to get updated on those. Some of those take six months to get implemented after that, but it's, it's going to change the way we do things now with those new regulations, and we may need to hire somebody to take care of it.
Especially the records request. The records request? Yeah, that's, that's going to get real ugly.
I think, I think if we just videotape everything and make a copy of DVD...
No, 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 no. It gets real ugly.
Okay, well, thank you, Michael. Was there anything else before we move on?
No, so, September 20th?
So, that's, that's our working plan at this point in time.
Working plan. What time's a working plan?
The minutes of June 7th. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve the minutes of the board of selectmen meeting of June 7th, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Application for 18 one-day special licenses for Renaissance Foods Limited, which is essentially King Richard's Fair.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Further discussion, Mr. Malinowski?
Well, first, I was going to say, have they paid their taxes yet?
Yes.
Yeah, these motions, I think we always make contingent on that.
But also, I want to know, have they paid their meals tax?
Well, that's where I was going to go, is that one of the concerns that we have is now that the town has passed the meals tax, so that we can properly make sure that the town receives what the taxpayers are expecting, the King Richard's Fair is an all cash business, and right now, when I spoke last year to the assessor's office, they did not have any level of confidence that, and, good or bad, they just didn't have any confidence whether or not that was being properly accounted for so that the town does receive its percent back on those meals taxes. So, I guess alls I'm just bringing up is, as you pass this motion, is that, you know, that there's some type of interaction with management down there to assure the town that it is, the proper accounting is being done for all meal receipts.
I mean, they should know, they sell, they sell the meal, the food tickets. There should be some way accountability that they should, the people that are in those booths selling those tickets, say, okay, I gave about 60 sheets of tickets today, and they know how many, because each one's worth a buck, so it's not like you have to do a lot of complicated math on it. And I think they, it's up to them really to start keeping better track of how many food tickets, because when they get them, you hand them in to buy your food, all they're doing is they're putting them through a strutter. So, the documentation has to be when you first sell the tickets, and they should have an obligation, especially, we have this tax now to give us an accurate accounting of how many, many food tickets they're selling.
And exactly what is going to be the enforcement mechanism for that?
Don't have an answer for it at this point, but it should be part of, I'm requesting it be part of the motion...
So, you want it's part of the, part of the motion to...
That they work out a plan with the town to properly document...
Properly demonstrate an accurate accounting of food sales.
And, and the thing is, they would be putting next year's license in jeopardy.
All right, is that the motion?
Yeah, I'll make that, the addition to the motion, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Application for common victual is licensed Honeydew Donuts.
We approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have one...
You forgot the common, common particular license for King Richard's Fair.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, application for common victual is licensed for King, for King's Fair, I'm assuming that's King Richard's Fair, or King's Fair, whatever it might be, but basically, that's a license for them to sell food.
I'll make the motion.
With the same qualifying language?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should we be doing the same for Honeydew? I mean, are we discriminating?
Are they doing that at King Richard's Fair?
Because King Richard's is all cash.
Honeydew doesn't, they don't own the place they're going into. Is this for the one up in north?
Yes.
Correct.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, but it's still a meal tax.
It's properly, yeah, because...
The owner should be doing it.
DOR can figure that out, because there's a million Dunkin' Donuts, Honeydew's places.
Right, 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 whereas King Richard's is all cash.
There's only one King Richard's Fair, what do you compare it to to see if you're high or low?
I get it. Just making sure.
So, on the King's Fair, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have one that came in late.
Yes, yes, I get that, same meal tax.
It is an application for a one-day special license for the annual chicken lobster bake at the Carver Sportsman's Club, and it's for August 28th, 2016, from noon to 8:00 p.m. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move we approve.
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Do we have an executive session, Mr. Malinowski?
Yes. Sorry.
What is the pleasure of the board?
Aren't you going to announce the next meeting first?
The next meeting will be August 16th.
I move we adjourn.
Second? Is there a second?